Thank you. Kristina, thank you.
Oh, uh, let's call the meeting's order. I hope this is on schedule. We are going to move, uh, tonight is the budget hearing. Let's go right into that. It's our first one of this, this time in the hour. This is the administrative.
Evening everyone, thank you for coming tonight. This is the budget hearing. If there was a budget presentation, it probably would have been more than this. This is our budget summary. On the top here, the page, you will see the expenditures listed. And you can see that you can call right power with Tony each year. Budget to budget is 2.9%. Over the testing ones, all of these expense codes have been reviewed in detail. As everything's on the website, the virtual presentations from January through April. And also, there's also a line by the budget on the website. If you're about to see order, find the details of those expenditures. The bottom half of the page, we're setting all the sources in revenue. And we keep number of funds, 2% increase in the tax levy. We were allowed by law to levy a tax increase of 2.51%. We proposed to levy as much lower at 2%. And majority of the increases, similar to just a year. Now, we have to cover on the tax levy, our contractual increases. Almost all of these are part of lobbying units. And they have contractual raising increases to help ensure applications that have to be met. And those contracts. There will be a second proposition on the ballot to establish a capital reserve fund. We have several reserve funds in the district. But by law, the capital reserve fund has to be approved by the voters. It has a limited term and a limited funding amount. And our previous term expired that was established in 2018 as an expired. So we need tools of the new capital reserve. Should we have any surplus savings or funds out here that we choose to allocate to a reserve fund? We need to have this account open to do it. So voting yes on this proposition is a kind of, uh, any tax levy, any chance of funds. Just opening account that is available for financing. We're also recording by turn to present our budget in a four format. Which consists of the administrative budget, which represents approximately 24% of the budget. The program budget represents 78.4% of the budget. And the capital budget represents 1.1% of the budget. And you can see here which elements are due to the new legislation. In addition to proposition 1 and 2, we will see the election of board of education trustees. There are eight candidates running for four at large states. There will be a week of candidate night on Monday in the high school in Georgia. It will be live stream. And it will be moderated by the board of candidates. And finally, budget day, this is team of the board of commissioners for the year. Is there any other questions?
Thank you very much, Tony. Board, if there are any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. It's a very arduous process to put the budget together. It starts with that member. That member and Tony and her team, Karen Chesky, and, um, everybody in the business office really does a lot of work. And there's a lot of back and forth, um, between the departments, among the districts. And it's really a group effort. And thank you very much, Tony, because it's not something that we just come to, um, the last day and say, here's everything. It's a lot. It's hours and hours and weeks and weeks of work and back and forth among, uh, Dr. Sampino, her administrative team, the staff, and all of the members. So thank you very, very much.
Good job.
All right, we're gonna go to public comments. Susan, this was them. Thank you, Olivia.
What do you think, everyone? I'm a graduate of Locust, graduate of Locust Valley High School. And I have two students who have already graduated. My student senior this year made a big decision before going into his junior year. He wanted to learn a trade instead of taking the college route like his brothers did. This was a very big decision for an athletic kid and a very social young man who had no friends from Locust Valley High School going into the OSCE's program. It would mean he would have to be apart from his group of friends for half of the day, five days a week, for two straight years. But any reservations he had were dimmed by distracted what he wanted to do, which was work with his hands. As a parent, I tended to navigate the LV CSD website to get more information on the programs offered through OSCE's. There was really nothing on the website that guided me in any way. In reaching out to his guidance counselor, we were sent a link for a OSCE's website. I was also sent an email to say my son should email the guidance counselor to get more information and to fill out a special form. I went back today to take a look and see if the website was updated. If there's any more information that I could find on the Locust Valley School District website about OSCE's. I found tabs, uh, that talked about the staff, news, events, food service, documents, athletes, clubs, daily announcements, drugstores, ed, high school counseling, library info center, National Honor Society, faculty directory, homecoming. You get the picture. Nothing about OSCE's still. Nothing. So I decided to type into the tab for the search bar, OSCE's. Nothing relevant pops up. Just random things that maybe have the word OSCE's in them show up. For the graduating class in particular, this year, uh, the calendar made for the end of your activities did not take into account the graduation for OSCE students, which takes place at Hofstra University at 7:00. Why is this so important? It's the same night as the Locust Valley Senior Prom. My son, who had more than once received accolades at OSCE's, being on the honor roll there, will not be able to attend his graduation at OSCE's because, of course, he wants to attend his senior prom. So, I am saying this not for my son this year, because obviously, he's graduating, he's my last kid, but I'm saying it for the future. Please, take a look at your website. Take a look at what you have to offer for these kids that they can look at for OSCE's. There's nothing there. And it's not, I'm hoping that in the future, you're seeing what's going on in the world. And people aren't looking to have other things besides college education. He wanted to be, and he still wants to be, an electrician. And he's studying that, and he's doing very well. So please, make it a little more accessible through Locust Valley District. There's so many accolades that are on the website, and I appreciate that. And I love what everybody's doing, and I'm proud of all the students here. But you have to remember, every student counts, every graduate counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Very, very, very important, um, we will make sure that that website is updated. And, um, I am very sorry about the calendar conflict. I will say that we have many students that go to OSCE's. I believe we have 69, am I right? I think it's 69. It equals the IB program enrollees. And this board has tried very hard to find a balance and to inform the parents, um, through work sessions. We had one last year where we talked about that. And it is, it's in the force guides as well this year. We also adjusted next year's, um, calendar to make sure that the OSCE's kids have the same days off as we did. We're close to it. Next year's a little bit of a wacky year, because the holidays aren't next to each other. But with that many children coming into the programs, we are acutely aware of why they're coming into the programs. And we're adjusting ourselves in the high school itself. This year, myself and Patrick DiClementi started seminars where, um, we brought in local, uh, tradesmen. Because we did not want to put just tradesmen in with a career night. We wanted to have an intimate experience. Um, we've brought in the judges to talk about, um, pathways in the court systems. Um, so we are acutely aware, and I am very sorry about that conflict, and it will never happen again. But thank you for bringing this to the community's attention at this point. All right, Mrs. McGlocklin?
Someone? Yeah? Okay. Good evening, please McGlocklin, David. Uh, I'm just gonna sign in as, with my pronouns, David, uh, so I could comment multiple times. But I thought that would give Susan a heart attack. And our little birdie told me that she's retiring very soon, so I want to congratulate her. And, and I will just have her in comments. Um, I want to thank the district for letting me read to my grandson's library classes, uh, newly published book, The Not Berries. Uh, again, the website is not very helpful. I didn't, uh, have the name of the Babel Primary Librarians, so I tried finding it. Couldn't find it. They're not listed by schools. So my son finally told me that, uh, her name was Ms. Mora. I want to give her a photo credit. Thank you. I don't know if anyone else on the board knows that I did this because Lauren set it up. But, uh, I didn't see any notes. Fantastic picture. Um, they used wonderful equipment that projected the book up on the screen for all the kids in the primary school. They weren't using that in intermediate school. And, uh, this allowed me to target, uh, the age group that this is really appropriate for. So, anyone looking to buy it, it's on my son's website, cornicorcomics.com. And it's called The Not Berries. Next, uh, real quick, last year when I ran for the board, CPC asked the candidates if they were voting yes for the budget. I passed on the question. Now, my answer is no. I voted no. I'm voting no again this year. But I'll tell you this, if the League of Women Voters had been moderating last year, that question would not have been allowed. Our voting choices are private. That should never have been asked. So, I hope they're not going to try and repeat that again. Uh, $48,538 per student outrageous. All right. And now onto the final comment. Uh, I noticed that there are no policies currently under review. I'm hoping the candidates that get elected will take a look at policy 5020.4, student gender identity. It was adopted 11/19/19. And currently, biological males who identify as females in this district can play on girls' sports, in girls' locker rooms, and even so much as go on to, uh, accommodations on field trips with girls. This is something that needs looking at before you have a major problem. So, thank you.
All right. Olivia and Maggie, would you guys like to fill us in? I want to know what's going on.
Good evening, all. It is great to be with you here tonight. We are currently in the fourth quarter as third quarter grades have just been finalized. Students and teachers are prepping for exams in the upcoming weeks. We wish all the students the best of luck as they look to finish the school year on a great end. Yesterday, seniors celebrated up in a wedding, where they showed off their future class as they move on to college, trade school, or the armed forces. It was a great event and brought the senior class together even much more, as we appreciate, these final weeks of high school. Last week, our high school had honored the top 15 in the senior class, as well as the notable teachers who led them to such success. It was a successful event honoring all the students and the staff's hard work.
Locust Valley is successful on the field this season, as many teams are projected to go far into this postseason. The first unified basketball game is this week, home on Wednesday at Abbot Golf. Make sure to come out and support all these teams. Docmores and juniors recently attended college night as they explored opportunities for future careers. Our EMT program at the high school has recently finished its course with its final and looked to succeed on the state exam. The students have their lab at the NCTMSA Academy, where they learned how to extrude persons from vehicles and assessment of trauma patients. The spring concerts were held at the high school, and the audience was awed by the sheer talent of the students. Last week, the three health club hosted a day full of lectures and training panels with a variety of medical professionals. We thank you for your attendance. Thank you.
We're gonna go back to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, boys and girls. You know, I love seeing everybody out here. It's like the last thing, having all the students to celebrate. Um, it is my favorite when I get to see the whole here. So, thank you so much for coming. Thank you to your parents for bringing me here. Um, I can't believe it's May. Uh, we're gearing up the last two months, and we're already planning the next two years. Uh, I was lucky enough to attend the top 15 celebration, where we celebrated our top 15 students in honor to the influential teachers. Uh, congratulations to Miss Olivia Del Tato, she was wonderful. Congratulations. Wonderful reports, we really appreciate it. Uh, I echo the statement of the, her amazing reuse of the, of the, uh, spring concerts in the local high school. Um, tomorrow is unified basketball, I'm giving a plug, uh, for that, 5:00 PM. Um, Administrative Assistance Week was last week. A very special thank you to Susan Amersmith, who puts up with me, and Charlene Enn, who also puts up with me. And the both offices, I've been a lot lately. Um, and Teacher Appreciation Week next week, a very special thank you to all of our teachers. Thank you so much. Um, it is my great pleasure to introduce our wonderful Director of the Fine Arts, Music, and Instructional Technology, because I get all that, Ms. Amory Bogaspinah.
Olivia and Margaret, you can go home to study for your IB classes. Good luck on exams tomorrow, girls.
All right, hello, good evening. I get to do my favorite thing this evening. I get to celebrate our wonderful artists in the audience tonight. My name is Amory Bogaspinah, and I'm the Coordinator of Instructional Technology in the Fine Applied Arts. I would like to thank Dr. Sampino, the Board of Education, the community, parents, our students, for having me here tonight to recognize the accomplishments of some of our exceptional student artists. This year, we had 15 students selected for the Art Supervisors Association 2023 All-County Art Exhibition. This exhibit, which took place on Sunday, March 19th, at Long Beach High School. Here's a picture of it right here. Honors NASA County Student Artist from kindergarten through grade 12. We are very proud of our student artists, and I will now call them forward individually to be celebrated as their artwork is displayed on the screen right above me. This artwork will also be displayed in our administrative building for the upcoming year. So we have a rotating art exhibit, and we have, you know, our 2022 all county artists displayed there currently. In the next few weeks, we'll swap that for 2023 artists. So, when I call up your name, please phone me. I have a certificate for you, and then we're all gonna take a photo at the end. All right, our first artist from Babel Primary, we have Abner Glassius, teacher Donna Chaplin. Next up, we have Michaela Sardani from Babel Intermediate, teacher Miss Donna Chaplin. Next up, we have Maeve Gager from Babel Intermediate, Miss Donna Chaplin. And now we have Aidan Cantoye, teacher Dana Ettinger from Locust Valley. Or Elia Braun from Locust Valley Intermediate. I hope you're enjoying these absolute, absolutely beautiful pieces of artwork on the screen of all the local students. Next up, Shannon Aguirre from Locust Valley Intermediate. From Locust Valley Middle School, Hamna Abi, teacher Mr. Thomas Calle. Also from Locust Valley Middle School, Robert Gianna Spazio, teacher Mr. Thomas Calle. F. Gianna Moriano from Locust Valley Middle School, teacher Mr. Thomas Calle. Now from Locust Valley High School, teacher Miss Linda De Feo, William Pott. Also from the high school, teacher Miss Linda De Feo, Grace Panzerina. Erin Vecchia from Locust Valley High School, teacher Miss Linda De Feo. Next up, we have Juliana Naddit, teacher Miss Melanie Udi from Locust Valley High School. And Juliana was actually selected to be our senior staff at the All-County Exhibition this year. So congratulations. Thomas Ruffaker, Locust Valley High School, Miss Melanie Udi. Victoria Alessi, Melanie Udi, Locust Valley High School. All right, now we're gonna move on to the Colors of Long Island, their 24th Annual Student Art Show, which was on display from February 17th until April 8th, 8th, at the Long Island Museum in Stonewall. So first up, we have Lucas Kim from Babel Primary, teacher Miss Donna Chaplin. From Babel Intermediate, teacher Miss Donna Chaplin, Aitchan Pott. From Locust Valley Intermediate, teacher Miss Dana Ettinger, Sofia Acosta. Also from LVI, Miss Dana Ettinger, that is the teacher, Nicholas Aguil. Next, we have Kelly Rubenstein, Miss Dana Ettinger, the teacher from Anne McArthur Primary. And next, David Tifari from Anne McArthur Primary, also Dana Ettinger. All right, our Advanced Visions 18 High School Started Artists of Excellence will now be recognized for their outstanding achievement of having their work displayed at Long County University in March. First, we have William Pott. First, we have William Hott. And Miss Claire Simon, who was also given the Jurors Award at this exhibition. So, congratulations. And lastly, we celebrate and recognize the two students who represented Locust Valley in the NICE Lab, which is the New York State Art Teachers Association Legislative Exhibit, which is the largest public display of student artwork in a government building by this organization. First, we have Angelina Gregoria, Teacher Miss Melanie Rooney from Locust Valley. And last, we have Andy Germans, Miss Melanie Rooney. And before we take our picture, I would just like to acknowledge all of our wonderful art teachers who made this all possible, shepherding these students to their great artistic achievements. Miss Dana Ettinger, Donna Chaplin, Melanie Rooney, Thomas Calale, and Linda DeFeo all played a critical role in guiding these students to become the incredible artists that you are now. Thank you for all that you do. Congratulations once again. Let's take a pic. I have more celebrating. Tonight, we are also honoring the hard work and accomplishments of our film students who recently had their work showcased at our Monday Night at the Movies event and the Locust Valley Film Festival in March. Our film students not only played a prominent role in these events, but they are also responsible for the live streaming of our concerts, after a foot of just sporting events, producing content for LVTV. I could go on and on. I am delighted to welcome Mr. Roger Boucher, the head of our film program and a crucial member of our school community. To present the details of these exceptional events and commend our outstanding students.
Thank you so much. I would really like to thank everyone for the tremendous support that we receive in the film program, from the board, the central administration, to our amazing parents council that really outdid themselves this year. They've really come through for us in planning our events and a lot could speak a lot about how great our student work is. I'd rather show you a small sample of just how amazing they are.
You just gotta trust me. He's gonna learn to adapt. You just gotta give him time. We have a couple more days until he starts this year. Trust me. I'll sign us in my office. Let's go.
Hi, I'm Luke Segley. I'm eleven years old. This is a picture from sixty days ago. To help this product, I was able to transform it into the man I really was. And I'm helping return that goofy stash into a goofy stash.
You know what happens when you don't drink water every twenty minutes? Dizziness, delusion, death.
My little clone is identical clone. Your clone can do your homework. Eat candy with you. Ahhh. Yeah, or cleaning windows. Or maybe cleaning some glasses. It's so fun. You can even drink it.
Please, if you see these symptoms in yourself, get help. There are people who love and care for you. Probably. Let's show you some examples.
Oh, well, I totally love that. Wow. Okay, okay. You're me.
And the only way to be sexy is women shining up. It's a socialist idea.
It smells so good. We can practically taste it.
We have to sneak past your sister again.
Sneak what past me? Who's that? Where you been in there? Sister! Reagan's an only child. Step sister.
Cinderella. Would you mind trying on this shoe for us?
Ladies and gentlemen, after Jerry, if the glow shoe doesn't fit, you must acquit.
How've you been?
I've been good.
Good. We should probably get going to the reservation. We don't want to be late again.
What about the marae? I was warning parents. We know them really well. I know that they married for love.
No, they married because they were both forty-four and found no one that they can actually love. It's not real. I think it is.
His vision is back to normal. He has retained his memories and he has learned to cope with his anger. We have made progress over the six weeks with our patient here and I'm glad to say that our cure has finally worked.
Once again, round of applause for our filmmakers for the team. I would like to add that the Monday Night at the Movies and the Film Festival are one-of-a-kind events. These are things that really inspire not just our students, but students across the island. I've had a lot of schools calling and telling me that this is the thing that keeps their program on because they tell their students that they want them to come to meet in Locust Valley. And the events also, you know, give us a little bit of a push for us to meet our deadlines and finish our work because of the desire to show everything in public. And the feeling that the students get, being able to show it to a legitimate live audience, is just something that you can't duplicate any other way. So, thank you again for helping us create these events. And we had a very young program this year and we are very excited for that. But we do have, as much as a very small senior class, I'd like to recognize Aiden Roman. He's been working for forty years through, an unimaginable four years in some ways, and sitting through it and finding a way to get some work done. And just happy, you have the film students just, please just come on up and let's take a, a photo together.
All right. Ready. One, two, three. Thank you.
And one last thank you. Thank you to the students who put up with me for the entire year of pushing you and telling you, no, please go back and redo that again. I appreciate it. I think we're all happy with that.
Roger, I just, you know, you're my favorite teacher in Locust Valley that my kids never had, right? You're the one. For those of you who don't know Mr. Boucher, Mr. Boucher sometimes is in those films, maybe just not in the highlights tonight, but sometimes is in the film with the kids. He does every single aspect of filmmaking and TV making with the kids. And the district has put, maybe you wanted to talk about it, a little studio downstairs with a green screen. Yeah, I'll let you talk about it because it's a little high-tech. But we did, and also just share with the audience the LVTV that they can find on YouTube. And I follow that. And you're just, I read your letters all the time and I tell you, he is a gem in this district. Aside from being our right hand for all of our meetings and all of our techniques, he is irreplaceable as district. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. But please tell me about the TV.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I guess when COVID hit us, it became really problematic because we were in the conference room here. And it was a very small room. It was all ventilation. So, we had to move. So, we moved to bounce around the building a little bit, but then administration decided, and board decided to go and push forward for us to finally convert space. And we did a conversion in five B and six B. And we now have a TV studio, control room, a green screen studio, lights, a microphone, a dedicated classroom slash editing area. And I think it's made all the difference for the students to be able to dedicate themselves to doing the work. There's space to do it now. We used to share in here, believe it or not. It obviously created a synergy. So, I think it's been a godsend for us and it is really building. I think it's taken off now very much.
Thank you so much. And I also would just like to acknowledge Mrs. Bonasfina. Mrs. Bonasfina is the Fine Arts and Technology Coordinator. She, I don't know, she's phenomenal. Everything she does, we say, touches, turns to gold. And we can see it in our music programs. I just went to the sixth grade concert and I did not hear one kid play a key off note, which for sixth grade is pretty incredible. Usually, you're a little jarred in a couple of the songs, but not with this group. And you can see, you can see her fingerprints on everything that goes on, whether it's the art programs or the music programs or the technology. And she, again, is a right-hand person for this district, Dr. Sanpino, and for the board. And I just have to acknowledge you and all of your hard work and your team. Thank you so much. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Just really quickly, just while we have this group of students, I wanted to acknowledge one student in particular. We have a wonderful group of students at Babel Intermediate that sent some letters out to community members. Many of us are gonna appear at the table to see them from our student council members. One from Miss Maeve Geiger, who sent me a wonderful personalized letter. And what they did was share some of their ideas for what they want to see in the district. And as much as seven people, eight people, ten people can sit in a room as adults, the best ideas, I think, always come from our students. So, Miss Maeve Geiger loves outdoor snack time and thought it would be a really awesome idea to make it something that every class could enjoy. And I promise you, Maeve and all the other students that sent us letters, that we will really take them all under very careful consideration. We promise to give them a lot of time. And we just appreciate hearing from students. So, you don't have to be in student council to write the board a letter. Anybody can write us a letter anytime. But, great idea, Maeve. I like snack outside, too. So. I actually have just two updates. First is, I want to just acknowledge, I'm very sure, the community, that safety in every capacity is the number one priority of this board and of the entire administration. About six months ago, we had off-site companies come in and evaluate all of our protocols. We received extremely high grades. We had very little to no adjustments that needed to be done to meet Homeland Security and any and all other safety protocols that are mandated or in law. Over the past few weeks, with recent national tragedies, we have been in constant contact with Nassau County Police Department. You will see an uptick in Nassau County Police cars in our parking lots. Your children may report to you that they are seeing police walk through the halls. We have invited the police to park in our parking lots. The high school used to have a little booth at the end of the exit. The county took it away two years ago. We had a conference with Patrick Ryder the other day. I asked him to ask Commissioner County Zep Laikman to consider putting one back up because we like their presence here. And there are different programs that the Nassau County Police Department can offer and we're taking advantage of it. We also have pop officers. We work very, very closely with Homeland Security and we just wanted to reassure the district that the safety is not something that we don't retake lightly and that even if you don't hear about it or read about it on Facebook, it's happening. It's something that we discuss, we evaluate all the time. And I just think it was important, being the time and the climate of what's going on in the world and even just locally, that we kind of addressed that. On to more exciting, happier news. The superintendent search is in full swing. We have a robust response. We were told that we were not in superintendent season when we put it out. Apparently, there's a season for finding superintendents and it wasn't then. So, happily, I am happy to report that we had a robust response with extremely high-quality candidates. The board is working closely with BOCES. We have not, we've utilized our contract with BOCES so there was no expense to the taxpayer. And it's been working out beautifully. They've been extremely attentive to us. And as someone who has gone through the process before, they've done every single thing that an outside agency would have done. They're just doing it for no additional cost to the district. The next stage, we are entering the final stages and we hope to have a nice announcement to the community within the next two to three weeks. And with that, I will like to dismiss all the children and parents. We're just going to board reports. If anybody wants to, hang on. if anybody wants to hang around. All right, moving on to board reports. The board is not here. The audit committee. Do you have anything to add? Anything going on with the audit right now? No? Budget and finance, you received.
Well.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Leslie. I want to thank Tony and Karen again and the whole administration of office that put the budget together. They started coming to the meetings. My daughters in 12th grade, they started coming in 3rd grade every meeting. And, you know, things go up in price. I was waiting. When I was on that side, I wanted to know why things were going down. But now, when I'm this side, I'm trying to stop things from going up. It's pretty hard to do, but they did a great job in the end. And I applaud them and thank them for all their hard work.
Policy hasn't met. Professional development and board training hasn't met. Oh, I'm sorry. Curriculum. Facilities.
Okay, I have an update on the projects. We're on schedule. The air conditioning. We're on schedule for the air conditioning in middle school and high school classrooms over the summer. So I went here, oh God, I graduated in 1971. And when you were up on that middle school against the field there, it was hot. So they're finally getting their air conditioning. The work schedule there to finish up the jobs is going planned. The transfer to capital on 2021 projects. We had electrical panels here since 1962. When was the building in summer in 1962? So all the switches and all the panels were the original panels since 1962. And I didn't hear it about this as much as I had heard that we should bring air conditioning to the high school auditorium, but they finally did this project. I remember a few years ago, they were in the old workshop, and suddenly stepped on the floor and they got arched with electrical shock. So that's all done. The middle school window and wall replacement will continue this summer. The LBI faculty restroom renovation project's completed. There's a punch list. BP, AMP, library, HVAC, the air conditioning upgrades, it's completed with a punch, with a punch list. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, and Public Relations and Communications Committee. No report. All right, unfinished business? New business? Consent agenda? Any questions? If we don't have any questions, can I have a motion to pass? Trustee Schaefer? Eamonn and consent agenda, John? We'll pass. And that's it. Board of Education will be convening an exec session to discuss personnel matters. Oh, sorry. We need a motion to.
Is there a public comment?
Oh. Motion to close the public meeting? Michelle, Lauren? All in favor? Aye. And we are going into exec session. Thank you so much, everybody.